Order the Laramie Planning Commission meeting for July eighth, twenty twenty four. Roll call, please.
Evans. Madamore.
Bruce.
Heiser White. O'Toole. Prusilik.
Here.
Schneider is absent and Moody.
Here. Okay, um, we do, we were not going to do the minutes for, for the tenth on this agenda. So, um, are there changes to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve agenda as presented?
Well, I mean, we're, we're not excluding June tenth, so move to approve the agenda.
Okay, without modify the agenda to not include those minutes. Um, second from John. Uh, all those in favor of that modified agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Okay. Agenda as modified, approved. Um, next order of business is, um, citizen comments, non-agenda related topics, no action can be taken. I don't see anybody on the board or in the audience, so we will, um, move on from there. Uh, planning commission and staff reports and comments. Derek and Joe? Anything you want to fill us in on?
Uh, Chair Commission, just, um, I'd sent out an email about the Urban Renewal Authority. They're doing some meetings. If you're still interested in that, let me know. John, I'd sent you an email. I can't get you signed up because it looks like you logged in partially or something. So, uh, check your email and then get in touch with me and I'll try to get you signed up. Okay? Um, and that's all I have. So.
Wyoming meeting in Cheyenne? Yeah, it's in Cheyenne.
No, no, it's in Laramie. It's an urban renewal one.
The urban renewal.
Or, no, but the other meeting, is everybody aware of it?
Oh, the wild, the Wyoming Pass meeting? Oh, yeah. So Wyoming, yeah, we could, I can mention that again. Yeah. So Western Planner and Wyoming Planning Association will be having a meeting in Cheyenne. Um, August, it's like.
Early August.
I'm trying to remember my dates exactly here. It's that Wednesday.
It's gonna be a big one, Derek.
August seventh through the ninth and, um, if you're, if you're interested in going, get in touch with me. Um, I can probably do some sort of registration. I could probably make that happen. There's some one days too, if you're interested in that. Of note, if you're gonna, if you want to attend something, uh, we are doing some planning commission training, um, on the Friday afternoon. And so that's kind of going to be the, the one day if like you're interested in just doing something, it's going to allow other planning commissioners to get together. We're going to do some public records works and talk about, you know, how to, how to run meetings, just a little bit of everything. So, uh, but if you're just interested in some of the general planning sessions, feel free to attend. Um, and you know, there's some mobile workshops. There's a lot of different sessions right now. Um, so, uh, it's a great opportunity. It's a little bit bigger than just the Wyoming Planning Association because it's a regional planning conference. So, um, but yes, that's coming up. Send me an email if you're interested and I can get you some details and then you can kind of look at it again. I think I'd sent out an email about two weeks ago or three weeks ago about it. So, but I can resend it all. So, okay.
I think it's a meeting worth attending, even if you just go for one day, you see some topics in terms of what other communities are doing and they do address the housing issue because it's an issue for everyone. And they also kind of let their hair down. I don't mean on five o'clock, but you do get to hear stuff that goes on, like the problems that they had in Cody with the spire and all, just stuff that goes on and it's kind of good background. That's good context. So it's worth going.
Very good. And there's a stormwater focus group meeting on the eleventh. So, and until Tom, Tommy will be there and Donald, are you gonna show up?
I didn't get any notification. So I can go. It's only eleventh.
I'll, 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 I'll go just to kind of, kind of curious. Tom, do you have a sense of what, or, or whoever, was it the last meeting sort of what this was gonna be about?
Probably the last meeting. It sounds to me like they've come up with a proposal for the city council to pass or reject, I mean, as far as how they're going to do this impervious surface fee and how they're going to implement it. And I think that's the way they're going to go. Your sense of it, Derek, it seems to me that they want to go with the impervious surface fee. That's the easiest one for them to do since they got the GIS and.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think eventually what they have to do is they're going to have to put something out on the table to, for council to consider. And so, you know, that's definitely probably the, uh, the easy and generic direction they're probably going to go. So, um.
But they didn't freak out of the eight, ten dollar estimate for much, but I don't think.
I don't know. I mean, it was pretty benign, I guess. I like, that was my sense as well. Um, like there was not uproar.
Well, that was kind of a number that was being kicked around.
Yeah.
Pretty early in the game.
I think it's, I, I think it's delicious because eight to ten dollars doesn't give the, doesn't give them enough money to do what they need to do. So, you know, eight to ten dollars is what they, a month is what they're kicking around now, but.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll be blunt and call it chump change.
Right, right. Well, the number's so big. Anyways, it should be an interesting discussion regardless. Um, any other, uh, comments from commissioners to? Okay. Um, disclosures, exportate communications and potential conflicts of interest? Anybody seeing none? Um, current planning projects, old business done. New business is conditional use permit twenty-four dash oh-three, twenty-second and Willett University of Wyoming Aquatic Center. Um, Joe, you want to fill us in on that?
Yeah, Chair Commission. Tonight we have before you, uh, a new building for the University of Wyoming. It is at the corner of twenty-second and Willett on the southeast side. Um, you may be familiar with this lot. This is a lot that typically houses only tailgates on game days. Um, it is located within the R three zoning district as most of the university is. Um, and while a recreation and pool facility is allowed by right, um, within that zoning district, the difference between this is that it's associated with a university use, which is a conditional use within the R three zoning district. Um, this specific building will be only within one of those lots. There's kind of three set out over there. Um, and so, um, and will essentially the, at its peak only be used, um, during sporting events. And it will use the parking areas that are used for athletic facilities in that area.
Joe, is there any intention to make this available to the public?
It is. So it is online. Um, oh, sorry. You mean like an open facility that anybody can use.
As community.
I cannot say that one way or another.
The present pool is available. How many hours a day?
At whenever the athletes are not using it. So it's around, uh, you have to work around the, uh, UW athletes' schedules for the most part. So they tend to get a lot of some time.
Correct.
So it less convenient time to the day, but still it has public access.
Yeah.
Had, yeah.
That's generally not part of our review process, uh, to determine who, who can use it and who can't. And so, sorry, I don't have a specific answer for you.
It's the chair.
Sure.
It's called a community building, uh, and under the, under the definition of a community building that is published and that's, you know, much for recreational use of the residents, the surrounding area. And so I, I'm disappointed that the university's representative isn't here because that's a question we like to say, are they going to keep Corbett and call that the public and student school or is this strictly for athletes? If it's strictly for athletes, I think we got a problem with calling it a community facility.
Right. Well, and that's, that is why primarily in the staff report, I, I refer to it as a university building or university use, which
It's exempted.
has to go through the conditional use process, whereas a community building would go, be permitted by right and never be before you all. Uh, and so.
Is, i- is there anything in their letter? I, I did not look at the associated le- letter from UW, I think that was in that packet, whether they call it a community.
Yeah. The first paragraph says it's for the university. For what it's.
It is, it is for university use. Uh, so, uh, they, they've never specified that it's community building, but by, if we are connecting it to something else in our community, we connect it most closely to the rec center, which is a community building. Um, so it's primarily university use, but it is a community building within that university use. And so it has.
You can't probe it down and all I should think is.
That I do not know. Uh, I could not answer.
Through the chair. Yes, yes, Donald.
I have several questions about this and I just want to echo what Tom said. Uh, for something of this scale that's going to have impacts on parking, uh, when there's going to be questions about, I mean, these are kind of peripheral questions, but still important. What's going to happen to Corbett? Uh, is this accessible to the public? Uh, it would have been very courteous for the university to actually have somebody present for something that's going to cost this amount of money. Uh, we, we already have an example from the university about how it treats kind of public ash, access issues in terms of prep, uh, prep school. And I just don't think we should. Uh, I've said enough. Uh, I, I think they should have a person here and I object to the fact that they don't have someone here.
Go ahead, Joe. Finish, finish your presentation.
Um, as conditional use permit, um, uh, I apologize. Kind of got off track. I have to re-center myself here.
Sorry, Joe.
Um, so, uh, surrounding land use, uh, around this property is all, um, is all university use. Uh, it's all within the R three zoning district. It varies from everything from a stormwater detention infrastructure, um, to special events, tailgating, parking, um, a university, um, multifamily residential unit, and then a university athletics indoor practice facility. Um, as you can see, there's no other uses around it that, or ownership around it that may be of concern or unusual in this specific aspect. Um, that being said, um, there's some findings that we have to review in association with, um, every conditional use permit. Um, and I'll go through those fairly quickly with you all. Um, the first is ingress and egress to the property, um, and proposed structures. Um, the ingress and egress on this property are already formally established with the parking areas. Um, the first would be off of Nelson Street, um, and twenty-second. Um, that is the, for that little parking lot area, the farthest south little street there. It's not really considered a huge street, um, but it is there and noted within, um, our, uh, our documentation on streets and everything. Um, the other one is on the north, um, the northeast corner of that property, um, going into Willett Street. It is also already established, um, with those, there'll be some enhanced crosswalks, um, or enhanced from what they are, which is nothing. Um, that should make it easier, um, for ADA access and like, um, the other is, the, the other aspect, another aspect that we have to look at is off-street parking and building areas. Um, both of those have been provided sufficiently on-site, um, but also in the surrounding area. That area specifically, um, to our knowledge, has never had major issues with parking, um, other than on game days, specifically football game days. Um, the parking facilities there are common use and if, um, you succeed what the parking that is required for the site itself, um, per, per code, um, they will easily overflow onto other areas that have been designated as parking by the university.
Which, which lot are we talking about of the three?
We're talking about the farthest north.
There's four, there's four lots.
Four.
So, yeah.
So that's the one right on the corner, cat corner from the arts building.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, yeah, Willett, on the Willett side, yeah.
Um, control over offsite impacts, noise, flare, odor effects, um, of the conditional use. Um, this use is pretty benign, um, in comparison to some other conditional uses that you may see. Um, everything is done indoors, um, and so noise, um, and odor will be, uh, minimally impacted, um, economics, um, and layer also at a minimum as well with the site. And so refuse and service area, um, this area will be serviced by the university's, uh, refuse system. They take care of their own trash as they have with all their other buildings and continue to do. Um, this area has an area for trash, which is screened appropriately and, um, meets city standards. Um, the next one we have to look at is utilities, um, with reference to location availability, compatibility. Um, for the most part, um, city, um, water and stormwater within this area is sufficient. Um, some of the sewer capacities downstream have been noted by our city engineer, our city engineering division. However, those are being worked out on the site plan level, um, with, with the applicant, um, to determine, to make, to make sure that it will not exceed a certain amount and, um, in highly impact our city infrastructures.
So, so Joe, well, if, if the engineering department says, oh, you know, when they drain the pool and, uh, various maintenance aspects of it, it's going to overload the system or, uh, what, what, what would, what would be the, do you have a sense of what you'd do at that point in time if there was a, an engineering problem with that?
Um,
What kind of problem?
That, that, the problem that you're referencing is the problem that they, um, just for, uh, Mr. Evans, Evans', um, knowledge, some of the concerns were related to emptying the pool and how much they would be emptying at one time and the demand it would put on to the local sewer system. Uh, I do not have a good sense one way or another, what engineering is thinking on those.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I, I read, I'm trying to find it somewhere that they anticipate that they would use up to three quarters of the pipe for, uh, backwashing the filters. There's no mention of emptying the pool, but the question is how often would they have to backwash the filters and what time of day they would do that. If you do it, uh, and at the wrong time of day, you could definitely overload the system. But, uh, if they do it in the middle of the night, that's a different story. I don't know if they have a timer on it, but I didn't see anything about emptying the pool. If they keep their chemicals right, they shouldn't have to.
Might be more of a timing thing than anything, you know?
Chair, through you, correct. Um, and there's, there's some concern about not the infrastructure closest to the university, but even farther downstream than the university and the capacities there. Um, and so those are the things that during the site plan engineering requested, um, addressed, but did not see any major issues with at this time. Derek, hold, hold on, John. Derek, just, just really quick on the pool emptying, the, the city and the university is aware of the like, when you dump a whole pool into our system and we, we actually coordinate that even beyond just the university with our, uh, with our, with our, with our public works division, like it's, I guess it's a common thing you have to deal with when you put a pool in, but it's something that we've made the university aware about and we're comfortable. You know, we've had those conversations. We're comfortable with the process and what do we do? We're not going to do it on game day when there's thirty thousand people in the stadium next door. Like, we, we know that and, and we're prepared to do that, whether it's this pool or other pools, even like our rec center pool. So.
Thanks, Derek.
But yeah. Facility going to be serviced by the Grand Avenue sewer drainage system or which one?
Um, that would be a question for engineering. I believe that it goes down Willett Drive and not over to Grand Avenue. Um, but I would have to check with them. Goes Willett and then Iverson. So it's kind of two of those lines. It doesn't even actually go into Grand Avenue at all.
We just got to trust the engineering department, I guess, that they got.
They're the engineers.
They got it straightened out.
Yeah, but that line has been overloaded.
Has it?
Many times over the years.
There's the grand, the grand, uh.
Yeah, grand and Iverson, you know, sewerheads floating down the street type thing. But that's, you know, adding another load is what it was.
Yeah. So just, just for talking, if, um, if something like this, you know, was a, was a load beyond to say what Corbett has done in the past, it's, it's a bigger facility and, um, and, and, and there were capacity problems and they said, well, you know, there's a bottleneck along Iverson and the diameter of the pipe or the condition of the pipe and it, the city needs to replace it. Would, would any sort of later uh, issues regarding infrastructure that would be caused by this be, be paid for by the university, you know, given it's, it's their facility that's causing the, just, just, I'm just speculating, just speculating.
Good speculation, yeah.
Generally for, for, um, site plan review, you have to show that, um, your impact on the system is adequately addressed and if improvements need to be made, that they are provided, whether it's onsite or downstream. And so my understanding, and just correct me if I'm wrong, is that the university would need to improve it to meet the capacity that they are requiring for this facility.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, next item that we're looking at is screening and buffering. Um, for the most part on this site, there's, with the exception of the trash facilities that need to be screened, there's not, um, very much screening that needs to be, to occur onsite. Um, and so, um, the screening requirements are minimal and in accordance with the standards, um, outlined in section fifteen, fourteen, zero, five, zero, H. Um, we also look at signs and any, um, proposed exterior lighting. Um, during this process, we ask for in their site plan to outline what signs are going to be in there and then also, um, a photometric plan, which outlines and shows us the lumens that will be, um, onsite are, will impact the area, um, both of which meet the standards, um, outlined in code for this site. Um, we also look at, um, the proposed use and if it is appropriate for the specific location, um, related, related to intensity and bulk. As you've seen from the plans, um, provided, um, this is a significant building on campus. This will change this intersection, but it is appropriate. You see the other buildings that are around it. They are all big. Um, and generally in related, relation to, um, athletic use, um, and university function. Um, this area meets both, um, the requirements of, of not only our plans, but also, um, the plans that are out, that are created by the university as well, whether it be the historic preservation plan or their design standards. Um, additionally, we look at proposed use is appropriate to specific location relative to public health, safety and convenience. Both of these are, are appropriately addressed within this. Um, there's no adverse noise light or light that would, that is not already currently, um, impacting the area and then health and safety and convenience is, um, also mitigated. I mean, the, the, uh, hospital is right there. The university is used to having, um, used to having, um, appropriate EMS onsite for athletic, um, athletic events. Um, the other, the other aspects that we look like, look at are the same as any other application, whether it be setbacks, wa- walls, um, landscaping, buffer yards, um, or anything and the site plan and conditional use show that all of these are within compliance of all these, um, all these standards. Legal notice was published in the Boomerang on June twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, um, and letters were sent out to property owners within three hundred feet of the property. Um, just for your knowledge, that is only the university within three hundred feet of this specific property. Um, so that was the only person that we were required to send letter notice to for this, um, for this, um, application, um, as can be expected with sending a letter to one property owner, we only, we did not receive any inquiries related to this CUP. Um, yeah. In conclusion, the, the, um, city planning staff is recommending, um, a conditional approval of this, um, this property with some conditions outlined, um, within your staff reports. I am here for any questions that I could answer.
Okay. Any questions from commission, uh, Tom?
All right, uh, the site plan and the, what, all the plans you gave us, I looked over them and it showed, do not show anything about how they propose to cool and heat this building. And my concern is if they plan on using the university's steam system, I would like to add another condition to this and that condition be that the, uh, university cannot close twenty-second street for more than seventy-two hours. I think the citizens of Laramie have put up with enough on fifteenth street. I mean, my grandfather worked on the Empire State Building from the foundation to the tower. And they built that in less time than the university has closed fifteenth street. When you add up all the closures they have had over the years, these steam pipes, I know, take a long time to go, to go in. Also, as I've, I can't find out for sure, but there is no way that the, there's a gas line on twenty-second street that could heat this building. So in other words, they'd have to bring one down from the new main on thirtieth street and bring it in there, which would cause more street disruptions. And I think I would like to add a condition in there if that's the way they plan on heating it, but we don't know because they don't have a representative here. But I would like to make that a serious point of discussion just for the general well-being of the public. And also I'd like to add a condition, if they close any other street, they can't close twenty-second for any reason. Right? I mean, it's a danger to the community for access for police and fire. And I think that's, you know, the university should start being a better neighbor. That's, and I, we don't know how they intend to heat this, but I think that could be a very big issue.
So, so, so Tom, you're just, you're talking about the construction of getting, getting all the infrastructure.
And I think that should be part of the condition of the CUP, the condition on the CUP. Otherwise they'll just do what they want like they did with the dorms.
Well, did, are you proposing to put like a time limit to how long it would?
How long they can close twenty-second street in any one time.
What would be the basis of that? I mean, that would be pretty, pretty, pretty difficult to do.
Health and safety of the public.
I mean, I'll defer to Derek. Is that even possible?
Is that even legal?
This particular conditional use permit, I don't know if I understand those ties and how they operate. That's a construction issue, right? Not a planning issue.
Um, I mean, you have your conditions in your, uh, report there that you're evaluating on. One is, you know, impacts to the community and adjacent properties. It, I think it's applicable if you, if you feel so much to decide to regulate, you know, closures of streets during construction, that's fine. I mean, I think you want to tie it though to why you're doing it, which sounds like member Madamore has expressed health and safety for emergency personnel and access to the community while.
while Fifteenth Street's closed. So what I would suggest is if it's only while Fifteenth Street is closed, then I would specify that in your motion and your added condition, but if it's all the time, why seventy two hours?
That's the number I pulled out of my hat.
Okay, so.
I I've got the numbers in there if we need.
You know, I think I I think the question I would have is, is it more applicable because Fifteenth is closed right now?
Yeah, but also if it, my big concern is those steam lines take forever to install. And uh, there's nothing you can do about it. It's just a very long, intensive labor laborious process. You've got to build a tunnel, you've got to connect the pipe, they've got to be welded. And you've got to have testing on every weld. It took, it takes forever to do that, you know, when they did the new ones down uh, not Lewis Street, the ones right in between the two dorms, that street there it by the Ag Building. That took them almost four months just to get those across Fifteenth Street. And that was two years ago. And uh, then are we going to close Twenty Second Street for four months? I think that's that's I think that's a real serious issue to consider.
And as part of these reviews, even if it's street reviews, which doesn't necessarily isn't necessarily our purview to review street improvements or closures. Our fire and safety personnel do review those and try to reduce impacts as much as possible. Sometimes improvements do take time. And I would caution, you know, giving too strict of boundaries, which would hamper any improvements or normal maintenance that may happen on that side or any other site.
Could, in the process of construction, could the city engineering or does the city engineering get doesn't really get involved in the in the construction or inspection of university infrastructure? Is that?
They would. I mean, in this case, I mean, they're going to be involved, yeah.
So 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 ma- maybe if the condition was that that city staff would be involved in construction management to to address health and safety issues.
And street closure.
And street of street closures, that there's there's some forceful language to say that that the city's going to weigh in on on a closure with a with a health and safety. Yeah, Derek.
I mean, we do that already.
Okay.
I mean, every time a street's closed, we are our Public Works Division, our Utilities Division, our fire, you know, life, health, safety, they're all looking at it to to find the best course of action, right? And, you know, even like Fifteenth Street, right now it's closed. We, it's what's needed to get the street reconstructed, to put the roundabouts in, to put the infrastructure in and, you know, it's going to take more than seventy two hours, right? Like it it is, but we've made plans for that. We have our fire personnel and, you know, safety personnel staged in different locations temporarily to make sure we're making response times. I mean, that's what we do, right? We plan for those things when we know about it because we coordinate it. And I mean, it is an inconvenience, right? If you use Fifteenth Street and you can't use Fifteenth, you can't use it right now. And so I think, as Joseph noted, I think if the concern is blocking off an additional road, then let's let's make that the case because Fifteenth is closed. Or finding alternatives or providing some ability for staff to come up with an option to keep traffic flowing or, you know, whatever that is, because if you say seventy two hours, I mean, it might take seventy two hours for concrete to clear, right? We're not even driving it for on it for a week. So then it's like.
But you're but but are you saying that the city's doing this anyway of looking at at what what the plan is for for road disruptions and how it jives with what's happening on Fifteenth or any other street and and making the the health and safety.
We update once a week on that topic alone, every Wednesday. I mean, like, I mean, because it's because it is that important and it, but I'm not saying that it's not a disruption to the community. It is. I mean, it's whether.
Would be would be considering that disruption in their in their what what they're asking the UW to do and how to modify.
Correct. Like Twenty Second and Fifteenth being closed is a major concern for the city. We recognize that. We don't I don't, I'll just say, we don't need Planning Commission to make the condition on this application to note that that's a concern, but if you so choose, you can. I mean, that's and that's, I think that's okay. It's just we're, we are cognizant of that and we're really, it's specifically related to, you know, emergency personnel. I mean, that's the biggest thing is I mean, as much as we don't like the inconvenience getting to work or grocery store or whatever, but, you know, it's how fast can we respond to a fire of, you know, an emergency for medical need or something like that? And that's where we're very aware of that. I mean, so.
Donald, you had a question?
So the questions that John and Tom are asking could be answered very quickly and easily if we had a representative here. And so what I would like to do is I would like to move to postpone consideration of COP twenty four oh three until a the Director of Planning and Design or his designate can be present at a scheduled meeting of the Laramie Planning Commission. Because otherwise, we can be here until the dogs, until the cows come home trying to tweak what Joe is trying to get passed. And we would like to pass this. Uh, it's a major construction. It'll bring a lot of employment. It'll bring bring a lot of money into the community. But I would really appreciate some consideration of being able to answer questions, reasonable questions we have. And I consider it impolite that they're not here. And so I would like to move to postpone consideration of this.
Second from from Tom.
Somebody read it out?
Okay, so i- is there a a a discussion amongst us for for the postponement? Um, is anybody, John, you've you've had some question?
Postpone under the condition that they would have a representative here to at that time.
Correct, yes. And and specifically, someone from the, ideally, someone from Planning and Design, not the press officer or not someone who's going to give us a bunch of fluff.
Jared, you heard it.
Um, I think if we postpone, we need to make sure that we pretty clearly state the questions that we have to ensure that they're that we're all in agreeance, that they're relevant, appropriate, and we the responses to those give us the information that we need to move forward. Not just, like you said, because like that dictates the individual that shows up. So I don't want the university to think it's just, oh, we're, you know, because no one's here, but rather A, B, C, and D are unanswered. They need to be answered and then when they are, they'll comfortable, you know, making such motion.
Good point. I think that's it.
So so I think there's two questions we would like answered. One is John's question, will this be accessible to the public? And the second one relates to the gas lines.
Well, however they determine to heat the building.
How are they going to heat the building?
And in the matter of street closures in order to get utilities to that structure.
And and maybe answering the question, so related to the second point is, can they give us some kind of estimate of how long those streets will be closed during construction, given that it's a lengthy process and they don't have a ton of control, but it'd be nice to get an estimate. Are we talking about three months? We talking about twelve months in terms of roads being closed. And I think those are, they should be answered fairly easily and quickly, and it it should be possible to pass this, but it'd be nice to have an answer to that.
I guess my question, and maybe this is for Joseph then, is please explain to me, you know, being a relatively new member of the Planning Commission, this issue of city use being tied to the conditional use permit so that I understand when I hear the university response, what what that means. Um, because I'm not sure I understand. So it's, we're saying if it's not open to the public, then it doesn't qualify as a community building. Um, or I just want to make sure I understand the nuance here that we're debating.
And and I think, go, yeah, go ahead, Joe.
So, within our use table, every university use within the R three zoning district has to be approved by conditional use. I included the community building portion on there, not because it's the primary use, which is university use. But because it helped illuminate what it, what the building was, what the function of the building was. It is primarily a university building, which requires a conditional use and a conditional use process. And the the community building is associated with it because it's kind of like secondary use. So.
Call it a university building and then our discussion is over.
I I I I don't think that the 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 community building is a is a is a relevant is a relevant thing because on the conditional use, it says University of Wyoming exempt. Okay, so, you know, I think I think the 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 sad fact is the university can do anything they want for the most part in in as as a conditional use in our in our three. The question would be whether there's some kind of an agreement in the long distant past, like like, you know, the community being able to use Red Jacoby Golf Course, you know, that was sort of something that had been set in stone a long time ago. If there was an agreement that that it that Corbett could be used for Laramie citizens. And and then the question would be, is is that that Corbett use transferring to the Aquatic Center? You know, what's what 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 tea is there that the that the community use is is relevant? Because I I could imagine UW person getting up there and saying, doesn't matter. We're we're using it for 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 what we're doing and we don't, we don't have to, it would be by our our generosity to open it up to the community, but we're not we're not committing to it right now.
And I would like to hear them say that.
Okay.
And and share through through you. I I apologize for maybe even including that in here. I thought it would help clarify what the building was for. But but that's neither here nor there. It is a university use and has to go through the conditional use process, whether it's open to the public or not. I mean, technically, if you are an alumni, you can still use Half Acre. But the public can can't. If you're not associated with the university in some way, you can't. I, as a swimmer, have never used Corbett outside of my since I've been at the University of Wyoming. I didn't know that it was open to the public, so. It's, I I I am somewhat regretting my choice in putting that in this document at this moment, so I do apologize.
Living learn.
Yeah.
Yeah, Derek?
And here's what I would say is that they don't have anybody here to answer questions, whether it's a small question that may or may not influence your boat. And I think, you know, we have, this isn't the first time where somebody has forgot or didn't show up. And if you have questions, you postpone it and wait till they show up. But whether their answer, whether it's public or not, doesn't necessarily change what our recommendation is in our staff report, which is that we don't believe that that's pertinent to the conversation in terms of the actual use of the building and the process and the use and the use table. Now, if that's important and we want to hear it said and stated, clear that that's not, that's not a public facility, that's fine. But that's not for us to answer. We're not the university. We can't, we can't answer that. And so whether it's a question that helps clarify or provide you a better understanding of the project, that's all fair game. I mean, it's it's all part of the conversation. So I think, you know, waiting until they have somebody here is fine.
Okay, good to know, Donald.
I think the advantage of us asking these questions is the folks who have been around the university have seen the university, I mean, it's a big dog. Uh, it's the largest enterprise we have in town. It is, it seems to me politic for the university to try and appear to be a good neighbor. These are the kind of questions I would like to think the city council will ask. And we're doing that in advance. So just clarifying, okay, what's the game plan here? Give us some sense of how long it'll take to get this built. How much disruption will there be? And will there be any public access? I know it's kind of outside the remit of this committee to ask what's going to happen to Corbett, but I would be kind of curious to know. So it just it's a message for the university.
Yeah.
And Chair, just to illuminate the process here. Uh, the Planning Commission is the deciding body on this. This never goes before City Council at all.
Well, that's not necessarily true. All right. I mean, I mean, the grim reality is that if we said no to this, UW would go to City Council and ask to to reverse our decision, which they have done in the past, i.e. the parking lot. So don't fool yourself into thinking that we are the final word. If if we said no to this, they'd do it anyways.
But unlike a subdivision where you make a recommendation for their approval.
Right, right, right. Does the UW is just a special a special reality. It's it's an important decision and it's good and 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 I I take your point, Donald, of of exactly about, you know, let's have some respect here.
Yep, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Tom.
Is there any possibility that someone at traffic engineering could address the issue of the impact of closing Twenty Second Street for four months? Would be and what could be done to alleviate that? I mean, is that a possible? I know they've reviewed this, but they've reviewed what you gave them. They I'd like to see somebody review what's actually happened in in a practical sense, because that that to me, it's still, you got the firehouse on Twenty Third and Reynolds. That is one of the main responding units to the university on the north side. And on the entire north side, that firehouse has to get to the university. And if Twenty Second Street's closed, then it's going to slow things down. And if they got a fire in the new, uh, the high high level building there for oil and gas drilling, that would be a tough one to get to unless they start using their four wheel drive over the grass.
Chair, through you, we can certainly request that engineering is there or any other appropriate bodies if you if you would like.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion among amongst? So 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 to answer your question, John, there were there were two, two issues that we've sort of pushed pushed around. Public question and and, you know, the heating disruption.
Would I need, if I moved postponed, do I need to have that in the?
Yeah, why not? Just, you know, give them so, you know, for example, what what issues we would like addressed.
I would like to strike the first about the use by the community. I don't, I don't personally find that. It might be a good question to ask. I don't think, based on everything that's presented to me, that it's relevant to or pertinent to our decision making. So I don't think that that's unheard of in that.
I agree.
Based on everything I heard.
I I.
I do agree that this question regarding security, safety, those matters could be very material to some of the.
And that question could be asked in the course of having somebody here.
Right, any question people ask.
Right, right, right.
But I think that some actually influence our decision making more than others.
I I I agree. Yeah, it's got the one that has meat for gas lines, right?
Yeah, for gas lines or steam lines. Because we don't know how they intend to heat. But I know there's not a big enough gas line down Twenty Second to heat a forty five thousand square foot building with a swimming pool.
I ask about sewage testing.
Uh, that's another one. I think we might have a fair question, but I think, like you said, most of that question will be addressed in the building permit process, but I really think we need to start looking at downstream more than what they build right there. And downstream is more of a concern.
Well, to hear from one question, they hear from more than one. So here's some draft language. I moved this on consideration of CUP dash twenty four dash oh three, Twenty Second and the Willet University of Wyoming Aquatic Center until representative of UW's Director of Planning and Design or his designate, is that right?
Yeah, designate.
A designate, and it can be present at a scheduled meeting of the Laramie Planning Commission to answer questions. These include likely duration of traffic disruption due to the closure of Twenty Second Street and our Willet for putting in a gas or steam line. Uh, due to the closure of twenty second street and our Willet for putting in a gas or steam line. That seem reasonable?
You talked about designate.
Yeah.
That's where they typically run the PR people. Yeah, the other thing you could say is the facilities manager or director of the university. Cause that is an actual person who knows something about it.
Well, I mean, I mean, the UW should, should be able to de- determine who they, who they stand here, do you think?
That's fair, I think, yeah.
Strike that, send a representative of UW.
And Derek.
I would just do representative of UW. They, they know what the, they know at least one of the questions that they're gonna ask. I would hope that they will send somebody that can answer questions about this project in a respectable and, and, and logical manner. Whether it's engineering related or construction related. And if they so choose to not do that, I guess then the commission can consider postponement again. Until they have the right people in the room to answer your questions. I mean, that's.
Yeah, Ryan.
Shall we make this for the next meeting or?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so you could, you could put the, the next meeting in your, in your postponement.
I think it's. July twenty second, yeah.
All right, is any other questions about his, his draft motion? You want to run, you run, Tom?
I'll second you.
You, you, you feel?
I'm, I'm fine, so. Are you okay with that?
I just read it too. Since you made some extra changes in there.
So I move this on consideration of CUP dash twenty four dash oh three twenty second of Willa, University of Wyoming Aquatic Center. Until representative UW can be present at the July twenty second meeting of the Laramie Planning Commission to answer questions. These include the light iteration, traffic disruption. Uh, due to the closure of twenty second street and our Willet for putting in gas or steam lines.
Okay, and so second from Tom, is that what I heard you? Okay, any further discussion? All right, um, roll call vote.
Evans.
Yes.
Matamore.
Aye.
Is there white?
Yes.
O'Toole.
Aye.
Silic.
Aye.
Schneider is absent. Moody.
Aye.
That is six yeses, zero no, and one absent.
Okay, conditional you, CUP postponed. Next order of business is a housing status report. Uh, city's ongoing effort to influence housing availability in Laramie. So this is a, a, uh, a work session, so to speak?
Yeah, uh. Uh, planning commission, the, at the request of the commissions, I posted. On your agenda, the option and the ability to view the city council meeting that I presented at. Um, instead of keeping you for a whole, whatever, two hours that I was there. It's allowed you to enjoy a beverage or do whatever you pleased and, uh, listen to that conversation. And I think here, here's what I would say in summary related to that conversation is that. Um, that was a, it was a long presentation and there was a lot of ideas presented to the city council. And as I noted in my meeting, not necessarily all these items are right for Laramie. Maybe right now or maybe in the future, I don't know. Um, but what I think is important about the housing conversation and the presentation that we did. Before the city council was one to provide them an update on just kind of where we're at, the housing kind of discussion and realm. And just, you know, just to briefly kind of mention, I mean, we, you know, we have been spending. A lot of time on a global issue, which is housing, right? So don't be, don't be fooled. This isn't a Laramie issue. This isn't just what you're seeing in the newspaper. Uh, we're seeing this across the globe and. We have, the city of Laramie has done a lot since twenty fifteen, trying to understand housing. And you all, as a commission, have been part of some of the code changes and things that we've done since twenty fifteen. You know, changes to the downtown commercial area, changes to parking, changes to setbacks and lot sizes and all the zoning districts. You know, developing things like the Urban Renewal Authority, you know, and permitting ABUs, you know, so. There's been a lot of things that the community has done, the city has done, whether it's been through planning commission and then eventually to council. Uh, we've done multiple studies to try to really understand the housing situation in Laramie. And so, you know, through that process, we've done a lot and what, you know. If you listen to the report and just one of the things that I kind of want to point out is, you know. Since two thousand and fifteen, the city of Laramie has permitted six hundred and eleven units of housing. But unfortunately. We needed one thousand five hundred and thirty eight by twenty twenty, so three years ago. That's, we didn't even make the halfway number, right? We didn't, you know, six hundred elevens had not even half of that fifteen hundred. In the housing information that we have twenty thirty, we need about four thousand units. So, uh, to just give you an idea, that's, that's how far we are behind, we believe. In the number of units that we need to accommodate the growth and the impact that we're seeing to, you know, try to improve affordability in the community. And so. One thing I want to point out though is that remember the city of Laramie, the government, the, you know, what we control. Is only a small piece of the big pie, right? There's a lot of outside factors that no matter all the changes we make here. We can't influence the Federal Reserve and their, in the, in, you know, interest rates. Uh, we don't, we don't get to tell, uh, the Middle East to stop a war, right? Like, all of those things impact us in terms of our housing in some way or another. And so I think what's important though, for our community to be thinking about is that. We're, we're talking about housing, we're trying to find solutions, we're trying to put things out there for the community to consider. And I think that that's where we're at. We're kind of at that next point of what are some of the other things that we might want to start thinking about and considering as a community? And, you know, just to briefly hit on a few of the things, you know, in the presentation that I gave to council, you know. Maybe we tackle more parking issues. Do we need to look at public infrastructure and the cost associated with it? Um, and how that impacts development and the cost of, the cost of affordability of homes and housing. Um, I spent a significant amount of time kind of talking about fees that the city has. Um, you know, one thing I'll point out, I mean, you know, the city has, you know, permit fees for things like the conditional use you just saw and stuff like that. But largely your larger permit fees are associated with building permits and public infrastructure. So your water and sewer connections. So, you know, do we need to start looking at those things? Do we look at those in only maybe areas for affordability? Or do we start looking at the other direction? Do we start penalizing if someone wants a large, single family home on a large lot, right? It's not efficient, it's not, it's not creating that density, it's not reducing. Um, do we modify zoning even more, right? We've, we currently, for instance, like in the R two zoning district. Uh, have, you know, up buildings that are allowed up to four units in a building. Do we increase that to like six or eight? I don't know, you know, so. Do we look at other development standards? Do we, do we look at eliminating all design standards, no landscaping, no parking requirements? I mean, you know, uh, those could potentially save money. Uh, do we, do we look at trying to incentivize things like infill development or small lots? Or, uh, anything that promotes more affordable affordability in the housing realm? Um, you know, do we, do we spend effort on things like land trusts? You know, right now I mentioned in our, in my staff, or in my report and my presentation that, you know, we rely on like the, you know. Nonprofits to deal with our land trusts, you know, do we, do we look at doing something different there? Um, do we look to the state of Wyoming to, to, to address some of these things? And, and what I didn't want to do tonight is, I'm not going to give you the presentation again. But what I think is important just for this group is to kind of hear a little bit, maybe just about. Out of that presentation, what, what resonated, what, what, where you felt that there might be opportunity? Because what's important for staff, for myself and my staff is to know. What sat well and maybe what didn't because ultimately usually what happens out of these processes is I take those comments and those thoughts. And start to formulate actual code updates or maybe planning initiatives or something like that to bring forward. And there's limited time with our staff, right? We, we don't have just infinite time to sit around and, and decide. We're gonna write a code for every single one of the things that I put in that presentation.
Oh, it takes you ten years.
I, I, I don't know how long it would take, it'd be a long time. But that's, but what I want to do is, is try to, try to accomplish things that start, that keep moving us in the right direction. Because I, I'll just tell you what my belief is related to this housing. There, there are communities that, they're the ostrich, right? The hand, the heads in the sand and they're just, it's, where they're just hoping it goes away. I don't, I don't think that's a good position. Um, I think there's going to be a lot of factors that we can't predict today that could come into play. That no matter how smart we all think we are, we're not going to figure it out. But what I think, communities that are doing the right, the right thing is trying to find ways in which. In their community that work for their community to try to improve the situation. And it might not drastically change the needle, so to speak, but help improve it. And I think as we, we want to, I think keeping that momentum going is important and trying to find out what's working. And then if we find things that work well, maybe that's where we push harder in those areas. Because we're, we're seeing the fruits of our labor, so to speak, we're, we're actually seeing more return on it. And so, you know, when we, you know, when we looked at, at the housing, like the big, big, big broad picture in housing. Um, you know, we heard, we heard from city council kind of a, a pretty wide series of things, um, in terms of the presentation, you know. Um, things like, um, addressing accessory dwelling units and making that maybe easier even. Maybe reducing fees related to that. We even heard that a little bit with infill development. How do we, you know, optimize areas that already have a road or a water or sewer line? Um, you know, the, there was this, you know, talk about, you know, we're probably not going to eliminate zoning in Laramie. Um, I don't think we're probably going to get rid of all of our development standards. I don't think that's what our community is looking for. Um, but, you know, do we maybe make modifications and allow some increased density? Or do we, uh, look at things like the infrastructure costs and how we can provide assistance there? Um, you know, we talked a little bit about, you know, do we look at fast tracking or incentivizing? Certain types of development, so development that are on smaller lots, maybe development that lends itself to more affordability. Do we figure out ways to, to make that easier or to go faster or to be cheaper? Um. You know, the, just kind of looking at my notes here, so, um. You know, one of the things that, you know, I, I talked pretty extensively about is, you know. When it comes to things like fees or infrastructure, if we reduce what we're doing. A lot of times that does mean that that impact may need to be, um, you know, taken in by the future generations, right? If we put in pipes that last less time, let's say thirty years versus fifty years. That just means we're fixing those things in thirty years or replacing them in thirty years. Doesn't necessarily mean that it's the same or equal. And so I think those are all things that we're going to have to consider as a community to see. Is the units, the number of housing units that we have more important than whatever that issue is that we're talking about? And so, you know, if, if you haven't watched the presentation, I implore you to do so. Because I mean, I mean, I s- I spent a significant amount of time going through a lot of different subjects and, um. Probably the conversation here is not going to be very fruitful because you probably haven't heard a lot of the different ideas that I presented. But if you have, I mean, I, I'm interested to hear that as well as just kind of anything else related to the housing. And so that's kind of what I wanted to do and introduce and.
Let me, let, let, let me propose that, that, do we just, each, each person, each, each commissioner. Get to say, get to address what, what Derek's looking at, you know, ideas and, you know, things that, that you really want to punctuate. For, that they can go back, that Derek can go back and continue with it. And, and we'll just go each through, through each commissioner. And then talk a little bit and then, and then have another, a, a, another round from each, each commissioner. And, and sort of have it be somewhat structured, um, so it's just not a, a, a gab fest.
Yeah, and, and here's the last thing I would say. This isn't the end. The, tonight's not the be all, end all of this. You're gonna think of something later, or maybe you're gonna watch the presentation again, or maybe you're gonna read an article, like, like. Feel free to kind of, you know, shoot me an email or give me a call and, you know, address something later. It's, it's, it is helpful to help me focus and try to find the avenues that I think that are going to be. The most productive for our community to try to maybe address, so that's all.
Okay, okay, Tom, you want to go first?
Yeah, uh, first of all. I watched the whole thing, the whole nine yards. So did my wife. She was listening while she was knitting. And I was impressed by the fact you threw it all up against the wall. I mean, you didn't leave anything out. So that was a lot of work and kudos to you for that. I had two specific ideas. I don't, the one's a big one, one's a little one. The little one is, we currently make, uh, developers put in the water lines on the subdivision. And then we charge a fee for each tap into that water line going to the individual homes. Or apartment units or whatever, whatever it is. If the developer puts in the water line, why should he pay another fee to put in the tap? You know, to tap that water line, I say the, the, leave it up to the developer and say. Yeah, go do it, no fee. You put in the water line, you can put in the taps as you go along. It would save digging, it would save excavation costs. And they already know where their lot lines are, so they could put a stub out on that main water line into the lot line. And they'd be done and they don't have to put in the water line and then come back and dig it up for, to put in the tap. And the meter and everything else. So I think that would be, it's a little one, but I think it's something that's a cost saving to the developer.
Is, i- isn't the, isn't the tap usually gone by the person that's a, you know, buys the lot?
Yeah, generally, but there's a second fee in that, you know, so eventually it's. You know, the developer is going to come in and build, low income housing is not going to sell off to individual home builders. He's going to be building lots and building the buildings on them. If you want to get a true low income developer or, or more modest development, I, I keep saying low income. Affordable housing, whatever it is, you want more modest development on it, smaller lots. And the developer himself would probably build and sell the units. Is what I'm envisioning would be a more workable thing. And so he wouldn't have to have a secondary fee to put in that water tap. That's just an idea I had. The other one is. We do not have in Laramie developers who can build low affordable housing. Uh, there are developers who do that and make money, not a lot of them. Alright, there were a couple in Albuquerque and I'm sure there's one or two in Denver. I think it would behoove us to go out and find these guys. Catch them by the ear, drag them up here and say, what are your ideas? What can we do? So I think we would need to seek out developers who've already done, uh, affordable housing successfully. And to me, four hundred thousand dollar track homes like you see in Fort Collins is not what we're looking for. We're looking for something that's out of the box. And there have got to be developers that are thinking out of the box. That's, that's all I had. Again, thank you for one hell of a presentation.
Yeah, Derek.
So just, just a quick response, so just so everybody knows, like, so tap, the tap fees. So developers are installing all the stubs right away and they're not charged. The tap fees are often paid by the home builder usually is where those fees come in. Um, when they, we essentially, we're essentially turning the service on is what we're doing at that point and giving them service. It's not, so we're not, we're not say, seeing savings in like the construction side of things. But the tap fee is a tap fee, right? It's another fee that's part of the process. So that's, that, just so that everybody knows, like. People aren't digging stuff up.
It's another fee that's part of the process. So that's that, just so that everybody knows, like, people aren't digging stuff up. Uh, we see that a little bit in some commercial and industrial areas because you don't know what's going there. But with the housing, you kind of know what's showing up, so, but that's all.
Well, you either go to three quarter or one inch.
Don, will you uh you wanna go second? You showed some interest?
So, eh, and I wanna compliment you for the presentation you gave to the city. I thought it was very informative. And I liked all the ideas and I appreciate you trying to educate us. So I thank you for doing that. Um, so when I went along, uh and and correct me if I'm wrong, but but I think I heard listening to your presentation. Your main message was we need to pursue more apartment buildings, multifamily dwellings. Is that right? Do I understand that right?
Yeah, I'll I'll say it again. We are not going to solve our housing problem with single family homes. It it's just, it is, it's it's the simple reality of. We cannot build enough single family houses detached or attached, like, single family and duplexes. To meet our housing needs. It's 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 not possible. We have to have some sort of multifamily in there. And that can range from big units to what, if you remember back a while back, we talked a lot about the missing middle. It's kind of those, we don't have a lot of those buildings that are four units to twelve units, right? Modest size, small apartment buildings that fit kind of everywhere. They're usually two or three stories. That that's that's where we gain our traction.
That's pretty, they're they're pretty sweet. I've been I've been driving around town and looking at those facilities, uh apartments that are two story. They fit in with the residents if it's done well with brick and it looks just nice and it's it's seamless. I. I, you know, I any sort of resistance to to apartments, I don't. I'm I'm all for it, you know, if they're not like, you know, four stories and two stories and well done, I think.
Although I was struck when we had the discussion about the accessory dwelling units. It was opposition to that, especially in my neighborhood. Uh, so I asked one question, I had several questions, but everybody should get a shot at this. When I went along to the Wyoming Community Development Authority meeting that Sherwood had sponsored. So what I was hearing from at least my table was that folks were saying we needed. More deregulation or acceleration of the current current approval process. And with the exception of the University of Wyoming, eh on on one particular thing, it it doesn't strike me that. The planning department or us or the city council drags its feet. I mean, it tries pretty darn hard. To try and get the thing through and we saw it again today when you were kind of nudging us to. Just get this done with the University of Wyoming. But but do you, do you agree with that? Uh, argument that we need more deregulation or acceleration because it seems to me you're putting them through as fast as you can.
So I think we can all agree, the faster the process, probably the better, right? You know, for for projects that we do here at the city, pretty much across the board in terms of building permits or developments. We have a three week review time. Most people do not get done in the first three weeks. Why? Their application doesn't have all the answers addressed. They need to make modifications. They get corrections from the city. Before it's ready for prime time, ready for an approval, ready to come before like a body such as yourselves or the council. I mean, I can't argue with the fact that if we could make everything go faster, we would, right? I do believe that we do our best to get things through as quickly as we can. We try to find solutions. Uh, to issues that come up. Not all of our solutions are always well received because they may cost more. They may not be what the applicant or the project. You know, whatever the project is related to, you know, desires. I think too, there's a lot of people that don't understand our process. I mean, I'll just say at our meeting the other day. One of the comments that was made is that the zoning process and the subdivision process couldn't go together. I don't know who said that, but we do it all the time. We've done it. This body has seen it in the last two years, like four times. So, you know, I think sometimes there's a little bit of confusion or misunderstanding or misinformation with people. But I'll also say is, I think we're not doing a good job to just kind of like sit back and say like, all these processes are always perfect. I think that's that's just bad practice, right? We don't, it, I think when you see that, that's complacency. And so what I what I would say is, my office is at least always open to hearing things of how we can do things better. And seeing if we can do that. Now, if you guys ask me to do one way, one week review times. I'll tell you, it's not gonna happen. We we simply just don't have the staff and the ability to do it. And some projects actually take longer than that, but also too. If so chose, council could make changes to maybe make something like that happen. So, I mean. I I what I don't like ever saying is like, nah, we're good, you know, three weeks. Um, we have compared. We are, we are fast compared to the region. And so, you know, we're pretty comparable to like what Cheyenne does. I think Cheyenne's maybe a little bit longer, but they've got a little bit different of a process. You know, but getting things through in which we do, I think is done well. I'll say probably the largest amount of time that we spend is during review and it is. Core definitely correlated the time or the extra time based upon the quality of the submission we get. And that's not necessarily what developers and our engineering firms and stuff wanna hear, but. It's the truth. When we get poor submittals, it's harder to review and it takes us longer to get through the process.
Do you have any idea how much more staff it would take to get to a one week review? Would it take three, four people?
I I I mean, really, any number I give you would be, we're talking, we're talking staff in every department.
That's true, yeah. So we can pull numbers out of my head.
Yeah, I mean, I'm 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 talking, I mean, we're, you're talking probably ten more people. I mean, you know, just for development review alone. I mean, and that's just to try, you know, but and that's, I'll just say though, that's this is unrealistic. No, communities aren't doing that. Um, it's just, that's just not what's happening, so.
You don't have those a load of proposals coming at you.
Oh, we'd have a lot of people sitting around until something showed up and then, you know.
Alright, it was Donald, another question?
Now, let's go around, I say, if everybody can.
Sil is on the left side, Sylvie, have you got um a a question, some questions?
Uh, yes, um, well, I I agree. I liked Councilwoman Richardson's idea about raising the fees for large single family housing. I like um reducing the infrastructure costs and. Well, I did hear um Commissioner Moody say that he wanted a two story limit, but I hope. Laramie remains flexible to the height restrictions because I think the future is going to be high rise housing with. Like eco landscaping and also that comment by Stacy Smith at the end of the. Work session. Well, there's, there's a three D printing company in Greeley, Colorado, like probably the. The world headquarters for um three D printing and they're partnering with Habitat for Humanity and. Other resources for low income housing and also that was um, that was a remarkable. Comment that he made about the automated home building and how the housing authorities don't even, well. Either don't know it or don't wanna hear it. So I hope, I hope Laramie remains open to this.
Okay, well, we'll all have a second se- second round with here, everybody. Uh, is that, is that all Sylvie for now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, alright, John?
Well, the whole premise of what we're doing is based upon some very large housing need numbers. I'd like to see some more reality in that, those numbers by putting two things into this. One is that the census shows that we're losing population. And that really involves more houses available. When you lose population. Also, I think there we need to include available apartments and I'm talking student apartments as well as. General apartments, but as I understand from people who are big renters in this community, there are several hundred apartments. That regularly go unrented in any student year because of the lack, you know, let's say decline in student populations. So I think those two things may go a long way to ameliorating this problem and would provide much more reality to what we're looking at.
Okay.
I mean, all, I I will say the numbers, the numbers that I gave you do take into account student housing and rentals. That's that's all part of it. It's not just ownership, it's actual units. I mean, it's. Best data and I mean, it matches up. The state of Wyoming did that recent analysis. I think it was about two months ago. So John, you might not have this link, but I could send it to you is the, I sent you a like a three hundred page document from the state of Wyoming on housing. Had a lot of like Albany County related housing information and that, and their numbers were also aligning with what our twenty fifteen study. So actually, I think it was actually a little worse, which isn't surprising, but so, but anyway, just I. I'll get you that link. It's it's a good document to kind of go through and see pretty current housing numbers and trends and things, so.
I think rather than boo booing the census, you really have to reflect that that is the official measure of population in any community. Certainly in the government size of how they allocate benefits. And that clearly shows that there, you know, is available housing in this community, just purely for that loss.
Okay, John?
Um, I'll just, like, everyone hit on a lot of good points, so I'll keep them pretty brief. But I think I really enjoyed your presentation mostly because of the diversity of. Recommendations or ideas that you proposed because I think that any complex problems are gonna be solved with one of those, right? I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, it's gonna be different types of housing. It's not multifamily. It's not single. It's not apartments. It's not. More mobiles. It's all of the above, right? It's everything on the on the buffet line and I I guess for me personally, there's a lot more. Homework on the Laramie community too and what the Laramie community sees for its future in terms of housing. You know, I'd like to see more continued discussion about, you know, what the community wants, what the community needs. And even thinking more about what constitutes affordable housing, what constitutes low income housing. So I think there's just a lot of. Information to be shared and learned in that process, so, I don't, that's all I have to say.
And and I think, you know, if you haven't heard me say it, there's no silver bullet for Laramie, you know, like, and I think. In some communities, there's maybe more of a silver bullet. For us, I think that it's. A lot of, a lot of different issues impacting the broader housing situation that we're in. And so I think, I I think that's partially why I kind of did what I did was to try to. Get some different ideas out there and to really get us thinking because I don't think that we're, we as a community have settled on one. Direction yet and then, you know, it's part of this meeting even as well. And I, and I think too, just when it, you know, comes to our community is I think our community, you know, may want. Certain things and might not and so, um, and I don't think we've gone quite that direction yet. We haven't got to that point yet. Cause I think we're still trying to figure out maybe which ideas do we wanna put out there, right? I don't think it does us a lot of good to put sixty five million ideas out there for the, for everybody to try to rank, right? I think it's trying to figure out what do we think might be good for our community based on what we know, what we hear, you know? And then, and then refining that as we move through the process, so.
Okay, alright, well, I'll put my two cents in. So, you know, there's 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 rentals and there's home buyers. And the 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 discussion that was had on the rental ordinance that was on the back part of that. Which was 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 really interesting. And and so, so the city is is wrestling with rental quality and whether you're gonna lose. Lose renters, uh rental units because landowners don't wanna play the rental game anymore or rents go up or. Apartments for for renters and that you're serving a population of of. Low income, medium income people of having a place to live on temporary basis at 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 rental thing. So that's, that's. Real important part of the equation, um, especially with the student uh off off campus student population. I I got no answers for it other than I I I think the city is wrestling with that from from what I heard. Um, on on that uh that that council meeting. So I think cl- more clarification of of. Of of the rental situation and Airbnbs and and how much, how, what, what um. Uh, homes are are off the market because people are are doing Airbnb sort of thing. So. That's all gonna be a continuing wrestle as to how that affects the supply and demand of places for people to live. The the other part is like the the summary on the on the twenty fifteen study. From the staff report was that um the most critical housing issues in the city include. Uh promoting the development of housing for the local workforce, college students and young professionals, affordable to all salary income levels. And another priority, providing housing opportunities for the elderly, first time home buyers, middle income persons. And family persons with special needs. So so that was kind of like the the priority in in twenty fifteen. Those things and 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 we've been talking about that idea and I, what what I haven't heard is. Is that that missing middle, you know, what's what's the price point? What is, you know, we say affordable. Well, maybe it's attainable or it's just less. Less expensive housing and um just looking at kind of what what the the the. The median or or the average uh wages in town and and what it would take. A a low, medium workforce to to actually own a home, to 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 be a first time home buyer, whatever. I I'm just gonna say, you know, somewhere, it's it's, you you have to have a a a mortgage. That's gonna be between, you know, two hundred, let's say two hundred, two hundred and fifty, maybe up to three hundred. If, I mean, it's it's a, it's crazy number. In in my head already, but. You know, I think establishing a a price point that's that's an objective. For of what's affordable or attainable or however, whatever language you wanna use of saying like, you know, God, we need to get. A home that's like between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And um I spoke with a planner in in Sheridan and and Sheridan does have a a community. Land trust between, it's a joint between city and county where. They have a developer like Tom was talking about that was gonna build. Low cost homes for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and that was the terms of engagement with the contractor. Say here's, city and county have bought this property and we're putting a contractor on that property to build homes. That are gonna sell for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or less. I mean, that's a very ta- in my mind, a very tangible. Thing and objective to say, that's where we wanna be. We wanna be able to have. So 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 you get to where you're 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 saying, hey, look, you're gonna have to build homes that are a thousand square feet. You know, eight hundred to to twelve hundred square feet because it's two hundred dollars per square foot to build a home. Thereabout and and so, you know, let's let's put the the numbers to and say, this is the price point. Here's the, people are going to to provide this. This housing for low, medium workforce, first time home buyers that are reflective of how much people are actually making in this community. You just say, well. A thousand square feet home is what you're gonna and and a lot size that's gonna be about like this and that's the bottom, the bottom line. You know, you.
I was up in Sheridan two days, week ago and looked at this very issue. And those two hundred and fifty thousand dollar houses are now selling for three hundred thousand.
Well, I I I I don't know whether they've, how they've put boundaries or non boundaries on 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 what it can sell for. I mean, that's. That's disheartening to hear that, that that you, I I would think that if it was a a land grant or a a a whatever they call it. A community land thing that. that you'd be saying, no, the price point isn't changing. The developer bought the land or or or, you know, built the 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 homes and they're selling for two fifty and that's what it's going to be. I I don't know. I I I don't know the details. I'm just I'm just trying to make the point that we we should have a price point because of of what we're shooting for and to have the square footage and the contractor and the lot size established for this is what we want to see to provide housing for these this group of people, young professionals, first time home buyers and um, and 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 go forward with with that that kind of a metric and then find the contractors that can do it. Or find the kind of whether it's three D printing of homes or or whatever the construction materials are. But, you know, people aren't going to get a two thousand square foot home that's going to be, you know, affordables in that metric. We're all just going to have to suck it up as to how much space we have to put our crap. You know, and and a thousand plus or minus two hundred square feet, you know, it's it's something to to strive for. Um, and and I haven't heard that discussion so so far. Um, as as what I've heard is it is it, you know, we we've had developments come across to to us where they're building a townhouse or they're, you know, fourth thing you know, and and ends up they're selling for four hundred thousand dollars. And I feel very like, well, you know, this one didn't work as far as I'm concerned for for a home that's that's affordable. I don't see four hundred thousand dollars as affordable to a first time home buyer for anybody living in this town other than people, you know, the few that are making some really good coin. So we just get it, get it to this defined thing that we're striving for to accomplish this objective that was a high priority in twenty fifteen. I don't think that priority has has gone away because we keep talking about it. That that's the missing middle as I as I understand it. Let's pursue that missing middle.
I need to excuse myself because I did a commitment to pick myself up. So.
Yes, but yeah. You know, when John Edwards made that presentation here a couple of weeks ago, he was, you know, basically talking about low income housing. And my guys looked into that and they said, there's no way that any of those houses are going to go for less than four hundred and fifty.
So I mean, how 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 do we do it? You know, I I just how how is Sheridan doing it with 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 their contractor that says I can? I can build out this subdivision for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per per for a lot.
If I may.
Sure.
Correct.
You're gonna have to do some outside the box thinking to get there. Now, I bought my first home in nineteen seventy six for twenty nine thousand dollars with a VA loan and it was a thousand square feet, one bedroom. I mean, two bedrooms, one bath and a kitchen. And that's about all it was. I sold that house twenty five years, twenty years later for sixty thousand. So you're always going to have inflation. The thing we need to do is give it a realistic, like you say, a realistic price point that we're looking to aim at. You can build a thousand square foot house on a two thousand square foot lot with no garage and just a place to park your car off the street, which is exactly what I had when I bought that place. But you also have to say, look, can we take this home and make it so it's expandable? Let's see if we could build this home in a factory somewhere and deliver it to the site and components. Put it together, because I've done that when I was in construction. We built panel walls, uh, we had styrofoam in them and finished walls on the inside and siding on the outside. And we slapped up uh, two thousand, three thousand square foot racquetball courts in an afternoon. That's the kind of thing you're going to have to start looking at outside of the box. Find people who do that. All right. And say, we've got North Fourth Street by the park. I think that's would be a prime location with the city yards where say, come to us, see what you can do with this. Have we haven't had much of a response to our, you know, RFP for that, have we?
We're did. We've met with the, we've selected a firm and they're we're working on that currently. Yeah. So we're we're down that road already.
Good.
Yeah.
I I didn't think you'd let the grass grow too long under your feet, but.
Trying not to.
Well, well, Brian Schuster brought up a a a comment at at the council meeting that was good. He mentioned Prairie's Edge. And 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 there's a, you know, the lots are about uh, two thousand square feet or or and that and you know, they 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 do slab on grade. They they give you a place to put your modular home and the and the homes are about, you know, eighteen hundred square feet. I think that includes the garage. The garages are pretty big. They're like five hundred or six hundred square feet. And so so they're they're basically probably a thousand, twelve hundred square foot living space homes. And I I I and and it's a very nice looking community. I mean, it looks, it's 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 sharp. And if if you had, you 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 sized your lots and you and 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 it's a city owned piece of property and you and you have a design for laying your slab on grade and you and you take the modular pieces and you park them down. Uh, if that's what actually happened in with Prairie Prairie's Edge, I'd say, well, there's a there's a model for something that looks pretty darn good. And, you know, maybe you don't have a a six hundred or seven hundred square foot garage. I mean, the garages are pretty big in those in those things. But, you know, you could modify the design to reduce the cost and garages are sort of more, not that as expensive as the as the living space. But you could still park a car on on that on that property. Um, even if you don't have a garage or you have, you know, and what's what's the um, the value of alleys for for parking, for getting off street parking? I mean, Laramie is full of alleys is, I mean, uh, this is sort of a a a diversion from the Prairie's Edge thing. May- maybe Derek, if you sort of sort of kicking, any supplement to what I'm saying about Prairie's Edge?
Well, let me let me make a couple of comments. So one, I would say that when we're talking about this housing issue and more specifically kind of this idea of like a price point. I think I think what's important to remember is I'm not just talking about like truly affordable housing where there's some sort of reduced rate housing. We're talking about affordability in housing, meaning that if you're the football coach, there's a house for you. And if you're the, you know, assistant professor at the university, there's a house for you. If you're the deputy clerk, there's a house for you. If there if you're the planner, there's a house for you. If you're retired, there's a house for you, right? All those are different price points and all of those are important in the broader housing market, right? I mean, I just I I just was messing with the numbers. I mean, if somebody's making sixty thousand dollars a year, it's recommended that you spend thirty percent of your income on your house, your living space. It's about fifteen hundred dollars a month. That's what it comes out to be. You know, and that's not, you know, not talking taxes. I just did the quick numbers on the old calculators. So crucify.
No, I I did. I I did. I did that today and it was fifteen hundred dollars.
But here but here's what's important about that is right, is we know what a mortgage costs. You know what that kind of amount of a house that would get you and things like that. And if we don't have those options throughout the market, here's what the person who makes sixty thousand does. One, they maybe spend fifty percent of their income on a house they really probably shouldn't be in and have difficulty doing things like maintaining it, fixing things, or maybe it does get run down and then it becomes a unit that's not good in the housing market. Or maybe they decide not to, they just decide to rent, right? They're not building equity. They're not probably developing roots in the community and things which are also good for your community. And so you want to find that balance. Now, not everybody's going to own a home and not everybody's going to rent, right? There's a mix of those people and you want to create that as mix as well. You don't want everybody owning and you don't want everybody renting. Because there are some people that may say, I don't know how long I'm going to be in Laramie, for instance, and I want to, you know, test the waters and they rent for a while and then they buy a house. Like, those are good things as well. And so I think, you know, with this conversation, I just I just want to make sure we're talking like there's, you know, how do we provide housing for the general workforce or like you said, the seniors or the, right? There's all these different.
Well, 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 the seniors are competing for exactly this, the first time home buyer, the missing middle. They're looking to downsize and to and to, you know, have a thousand or twelve hundred square foot. So so there's there, it seems to me like there's a tremendous demand for that missing middle. I'm I'm.
We have that. And that's where the West Side study just impressed me so much. We have a community in Laramie that's like that, and that's the West Side. I mean, it's it's already there. There's, you know, it's old, yes. But there are people in there who are living in thousand square foot homes that they fixed up over the years. Some have it, some haven't, some are less well kept than others. But for the most part, you know, it's a thriving little community. There's and they're small city lots.
There's small lots that were, I don't know, twelve or like eighteen hundred square foot city lots. They're small lots. And but that worked. And I think maybe we do expand on that a little bit, you know, and and go from there. But we have to keep our minds open for everything.
But 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 isn't all that that other stuff, the the professor and, I mean, that's already there. That's 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 baked into our supply for the most part, other than the houses are old, you know?
But I think but I think what I'm saying, though, is we know that there's not enough of it all, right?
So it's a matter of supply.
It's a supply issue. I mean, and so, but but remember, though, I mean, if you if you go across our community, I mean, for the most part of majority of our housing units are just single family homes on lots. But there's a whole range of them, right? And I think that that's the that's the thing, as we know, right now. I mean, we haven't approved a subdivision in quite a while that has what I would say are really small lots. Grandview Heights, the last filing in Grandview Heights had uh, some lots that were in that like thirty five hundred square foot range. Uh, but aside from that, we're not, we're not seeing someone emulate, for instance, the West Side of like, you know, twenty four hundred square foot lots. Can you? Our code allows it. Our code is set up and remember, not all, not many cities allow lots that small. Our community is set up to allow it, but we're not seeing it happen. And that's where like, you know, Prairie's Edge, for instance, right? Prairie's Edge is an is another, just it's another type of housing. It falls into that whole group of providing different types of housing. Because those houses, because you don't own the land.
Right.
Are bought and sold at a reduced rate that allow different people to get into the market, right? That's a that's a good thing. You want to see that mix of that types typology of housing. And, you know, could someone do something similar to that today? For sure, they could. Um, and but we're not seeing that. And then I think that that kind of goes to like, for instance, North Fourth Street. I mean, that's why we have the RFP. That's why we went through that process and that's why we're currently in negotiations with the development firm. Because we are trying to find a way to get somebody in here to do housing differently and put units in on a property that the city owns. We control that conversation. And that's how like places like Sheridan.
Right.
Are doing that is they often will, uh, it's through a land trust. I know what project you're talking about. It's a land trust. And and what happens there is the land is sold at a reduced rate that allows the developer to build houses at a reduced cost. And there are deed restrictions. They restrict those houses. Now, a lot of places, they still can increase because what you still want to have happen is the person who buys those, because usually the developer doesn't keep them, they build them, but they they make some money off the building of it. But then those people that live in those houses, so like, let's say you buy one. If you stay in it for a certain amount of time, you can gain a certain amount of equity over the years, but that's controlled so that when you sell it. So now you've made enough money, maybe you have a better job, maybe whatever, and your life circumstances allow you to build a, buy a different house in Sheridan. When you sell that house, it's at a more reduced rate for the next person. And that's usually how they kind of run that, uh, so that they kind of cap how much money you make. But it keeps the prices low across the whole project. And a lot of times that's for either forever or for like forty years or sixty years or something like that. And so, um, and like I mentioned, in in Laramie, we don't have any of that yet. And we rely on a nonprofit to that. My front door, my front door is the kind of avenue we would use if we were to have land to do something like that. Uh, but it's, you know, not something we have, you know, no one's donated a bunch of land. No one's given, you know, that that hasn't happened for our community yet. So and that's it. But it's another avenue, right? To try to try to find, you know, find solutions. So.
Donald, did you ever?
Might say that, you know, I was taught this long ago in the development business, that there is a reason for everything going on and it's generally a market driven reason, which means you'll never understand it. It just happens. And that reason is very evident in this community, you know, that there is a big change happening and we're going through it. But I don't think that's a change that requires a massive outlay of capital or fusion of capital from the outside to build houses, because it's obviously not coming.
Donald?
Well, I was gonna just gonna make the comment, which seems redundant, is the market's not working for a lot of people. It's just the market itself left alone is not working in this city and in many other communities. So I had several ideas, but one, since we're talking about land, and this is off the wall commie stuff. Uh, have we, has a city ever approached developers or wealthy people in our community? That this community has a lot of wealth in it. Not all of it is in town, but it's in Albany County with a proposal that they help the city acquire blocks of land that could be used for housing. Uh, specifically for apartment buildings. Have we ever done that? Has anybody ever done that? Uh, like in Wyoming, just ask for community support to buy some land that currently is being sat on. Sometimes for speculative purposes, and I see blocks of land just lying around in town, infill kind of land that making an approach to either the developers and our folks who have resources to ask, can you help us get this land and we will use it for affordable housing? Is that a stupid idea?
I mean, other communities do it all the time.
Right.
I mean, you know, there's there's all sorts of philanthropic groups that, you know, buy land and then give it back to cities and things like that. I mean, that's not uncommon. We haven't seen it in Laramie. No one's no, not to my knowledge, like, we've never like taken like a concerted effort to like, you know, talk to certain people about that. Um, you know, we, you know, probably the biggest situ- the biggest comparable would be the city taking city owned property, finding developers willing to develop it and making deals with them to to get the right product. You know, we've done that with affordable housing and senior housing specifically. Um, you know, we've done it on a business side of things, so for commercial development property, but not not to try to like build like a land baking collective or something. I'm just making up that term, but like, you know, something like that. I mean, I mean, it's, I, I mean, generosity is what that really is, is, you know, someone taking their own capital, buying land and then probably not seeking a return on that capital at some point, you know? I mean.
Can I ask two other quick questions?
Just like.
Yeah, yeah. And one is, there's no way that the old student housing that's on the UW campus, I think I assume most of that's going to be demolished, right?
Which, like dorms? We have not been told what they were going to do. They.
Don- Donald, I I I saw on the website today on on the dorms that I I guess that the new dorms that are being built are like nine hundred and something beds. And and then it's going to replace two out of the four halls, residential halls, which each one does like five hundred beds. So, I mean, they they didn't provide a lot of detail on on the website, but it sort of sounded like the the new dorms were were going to, two of the existing residence halls were going to be re redone or or ref you know, modified in some way and that there wasn't in a net increase in in beds for for student housing on campus?
No, that was from the original idea. They weren't increasing the student housing. They were just making it and improving it.
Right, you know, giving it a little more more pizzazz and and getting rid of the older, the the old.
Yeah, so they're going to end up. The last I heard, the plan was to demolish those two buildings so. The last I heard, the plan was to demolish those two buildings, although they may change their mind. I think if the city were to put some pressure on them and say, hey, look, you know, you guys have cost us fifty. Uh, bedrooms on Lewis and Baker Street. Maybe you might want to consider doing something nice with those dorms.
So that's, that's where I was going with that. Is the city ever thought of approaching the university? And the university is very much focused, as it has to be, on its own self-interest. But is there some kind of a deal? Is it even practical to convert some of those? I mean, they, they were built in the sixties, fifties. Are they even usable? Could they be converted if you knock down walls and so on and created apartments? Yeah, condos, whatever. And the other question was, and this truly is commie stuff. Um, some communities, and I think the effect of this is pretty marginal, but have a vacancy tax. And I'd asked the question and Mr. Enzi was there. Uh, uh, and Enzi guessed that we have approximately fifteen percent of vacant housing in Laramie. And I think John said the same thing, or something approximate that. Uh, that houses that are vacant for fifty percent or more of the year. And a vacancy tax in some communities has been levied. I know that would be very controversial and it probably wouldn't fly here. But is there any merit in something like that?
Yeah, I mean, I, in my presentation, I talked about, you know, essentially some sort of vacancy penalty.
Right.
Could be a tax. It could be, there's a lot of ways to, to deal with that and, um, you know. What, what that does is promote full time use of properties. Uh, eliminates, you know, second. Home ownership where it's, you know, occupied on seven days of a year, game day or whatever, right? Like, um, I. I think what we've tried to figure out at the city a little bit recently in the last like six months. Was trying to understand that vacancy number. And we're really not, I'm just, we're just not getting a good handle on it. So I just don't know, like, to, for me, it would be, it's, it's worthwhile to do something like that. If our numbers are high, right? Uh, because a theory that would promote more units on the market. If, if our units are, if there isn't that much vacancy, um, then it might not be that impactful, but.
So do you believe that the number, that, that Enzi's guess was fifteen percent? Does that sound on the ball to you or you just have no idea?
I have no idea. Like, I, yeah, I mean, you know, we have our code enforcement person that is in my office. You kind of, we kind of keep track of like properties that we think really are occupied. They often are nuisance issues for us. And, you know. We're talking, you know, twenty-ish, our public works department actually has a, a number of houses. That when they did the lead pipe survey recently, um, you know, we're talking another fifteen maybe. So, I mean. I mean, let's just say none of those are duplicates or anything. I mean, we're talking maybe forty units that we kind of know of. I mean, that doesn't mean that that we know about them all, but I think it's gotta be more than forty to probably make a tax worthwhile, right? Even if all forty of those come on the market, it doesn't swing things. But if there's fourth hundred. That's a lot different of a story, right? Like, but I, it, communities do it. So it's not, it's not that, it's not that far out of the picture, so, yeah.
S- Sylvie, do you have any follow up questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. But I, I, I agree with, 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 you know, Sylvie with respect to apartments and, you know, there's, there's no cap or, or top on. On, on, uh, two stories, but I think, I think height, heights wrestling. Down to the ground, you know, how high do you go? And what's, what's the sensibility and a practicality and, and, um, achieving objectives is. Real supportive of the apartment, um, idea.
Well, in almost any city in the world, your highest and best use of real estate is multi-story development. That's always gonna, it's always been and it's always gonna be. That's just the way it is. It's what the community allows on that. I think you get much over six floors and you're gonna have a community that isn't very appreciative of that.
Or it's on the edge, you know, on the edge of.
Yeah.
Areas where it doesn't have the view, the sort of issues. I don't know.
I think you could do six stories on, uh, Fourth Street, North Fourth Street property with no problem.
Yeah, I think the downtown, you know, it's putting people in there makes, makes sense rather than parking, you know?
And I, I think too, just, uh, John, just the, on the Grandview Heights, the. The one affordable housing complex is the part, the apartment part of that. But you're right, the other units, I mean. They're on smaller lots, right? But there's no, I don't think. I would agree. I don't think there's any guarantee that those are gonna be necessarily a lot cheaper than everything else that you're seeing in that neighborhood, you know? Um, and, and I think that that's what we. It, it's always a difficult position for like the city to be in is, you know, we can make changes to our codes and things. To allow for certain types of development to occur. But, you know, you still, in the end of the day, you have. A business decision that's made by, you know, business people and developers and builders and homeowners that. Of what they want to build. And, and, you know, right now, we see a lot of the single family homes and we're not seeing a lot of that, you know, kind of. How do we get people to think about their first home not being three thousand square feet with. You know, granite and a three car garage and being a thousand square feet and maybe a single car garage, right? You know, that's it. There is a little bit of that, that's, that's tough. And, you know, that's, but if we can maybe get that as an option. We can have people start at least having that as a, to consider, right? Cause if it doesn't exist, even if you want to do it, you can't do it, right? And, and I think that that's, you know, our hope is that we at least start to see some of that change. And, and it's gonna take time. It's gonna be incremental, um, but, uh, at least providing that option for it to happen is key.
Can, can, can.
Don't get in the business of trying to alter the market conditions though, because it's impossible. You'll never have any success on doing that.
And I, I don't think, and I, what I'm, what I'm saying that is, I'm just saying that. If, if there's at least, let's say there's ten one thousand square foot homes with a one car garage. There's at least ten people that have an opportunity, if that's the housing that they want, to, to go into it. But it doesn't solve, I don't think you're, I'm not gonna swing the market. I don't think, you know. The, the Laramie economy with those ten units. Now, over fifty years and after we're all long gone. Maybe we see some change long term with that. But I don't think we're gonna predict that. I mean, I'm not at least. That's, that's not my realm at least, so.
Council, council appears s- said something about, you know, the, the age of, of the housing stock. And, you know, granted, a, a large part of Laramie is very, is, is pretty old homes. How, 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 how do you think that, that, that has worked into supply and demand? As old homes just become more difficult to live in or, you know, what, what would be a response to that with respect to? Supply and demand?
I mean, you know, different aged house, housing stock is important to the broader housing outlook, right? Cause not everybody actually wants a new house necessarily. Um, what, what we're seeing right now a little bit and just like the trends. And, and I can't say that, just, this isn't necessarily for Laramie, but we're seeing this like nationwide is that. What's tough about the older housing stock is when you see things like, uh. In, an increase in inflation or in an increase in like construction costs. What does that mean? If you're a young family that, let's say, bought an older home, it means you're probably not remodeling your kitchen as quickly as you thought it was. Or. A new bedroom or an addition or the patio or the whatever you want to do. And I think that those are the things that we see that. Is important and why, like where your age of housing stock is. Cause if you're not getting like that maintenance, then you do sometimes get to that tipping point in those houses where maybe they're. Not gonna ever be able to be brought back. And that's bad, because then. That doesn't allow for somebody to move into it after somebody's fixed it up. Now it's like you gotta tear it down or something. Or really put a lot of money into it. And that's not, that's usually not good for your community. I mean, most communities aren't just ripping houses down all over. I mean, you always have your house that somebody didn't take care of or it had a fire or water damage or something and they have to tear it down. But, I mean. And for the most part across the whole United States, because our housing stock is only a few hundred years old, we're not like talking Europe. But, you know, there, people are fixing stuff up still. I mean, we have homes and even in our community that are over a hundred years old and we're still fixing them up. People are still living in them. They're still.
There are a lot of towns that are dying, you know, Detroit, take that as an example. Virtually every town that has negative population growth, let's say. Is, is starting to show the signs of strain. And I think you have to plan for that, not by building more houses, but actually. Repurposing existing ones.
And I think, and I think that that maybe goes to that, to the question, or at least the comment from. The chairs, just that I think it is important that our community, you know, that people are still maintaining those, that housing stock. That is older, because I think it's a valuable piece of that. You know, if somebody does move, if we, if we really were loo- losing population, which I don't, I don't think we are. That doesn't line up with anything we're seeing in this community.
Don't agree with the census.
I, I, I will go on record, I a hundred percent do not agree with the census. I was part of the census process. They literally just picked up and left Laramie and said, well, that's your number. There's no way the numbers are right. I, I don't, I don't believe the numbers at all. We'll see in whatever twenty. What is it? Twenty, thirty, whatever, right? Like, I just, I just, it just doesn't, it makes no sense. Like, it's not what we're seeing with everything that we see elsewhere. But that's, but it's still, it's the number we're dealt with, right? Like, I mean, we, we, we still have to reference that number in grants. They don't care, they don't care what I think. Yeah.
Written in stone.
It is, it is, it's what, it is what it is. And college communities were hit worse. But, and, uh, you know, so. I, I mean, I do think older houses and that older housing stock's important and that be- ability to maintain. Uh, one of the things I like noted in our presentation, in my presentation was, you know, do we look at ways to incentivize people to. Invest in their existing homes. I mean, that's another, another way to, to try to like bolster that. And that's, that's just another, it's another piece of that puzzle, right?
Yeah, no, it's, it's.
I think the interest rates will incentivize people to invest in their existing homes.
It's why you're not seeing movement in houses right now.
Yeah, I mean, it's a. It's again, it's a market force that's completely out of our control. We can't control that in any way.
Here's an on secretary. Do you, do you see? Designing alleys in, in new subdivisions as, as a, a way to reduce infrastructure costs? Like to say, to have streets that there's no, no street parking, you know, so the streets can be narrower and re- reduce some of the infrastructure costs. But you have an alley, you have, you have, you know, back of the house parking, uh. That isn't, you know, a paved surface and have, have a bunch of infrastructure cost, what the real alleys might, might be.
So I don't, I, here's what I would say about an alleyway. Is an alleyway doesn't necessarily, if it's there or not there. Mean that the housing is more affordable. But what I will say is it does, is it provides alternative options for design. And can make properties more affordable. I mean, I'll tell you, you can go to my neighborhood, I got an alleyway and. Our, that doesn't help my affordability of my house, period. I know it doesn't. But if you have an alleyway that's situated that allows for maybe a smaller, more narrow lot with a rear load garage. Heck yeah, an alleyway can save costs, can save infrastructure. I mean, it, there's, and I think that that's what's key is. Alleyways can be good and beneficial in that broader design for affordability. But also it doesn't necessarily equate to, it's always more affordable.
And they allowed people to develop their garages into apartments. It ran into all sorts of problems, not only with parking, but everything else. So. They have since backed away from doing that. They're trying to discourage alley development.
Yeah, and I think what we saw in Laramie in the last like twenty years. Developers stopped putting alleyways in because if they took that square footage. So an alleyway's sixteen to twenty-four feet wide and you added that three, four hundred square feet onto the lot. I mean, they were making, you know, another ten grand, twenty grand sometimes in certain subdivisions or more. Just by not putting the alleyway in, they, they were making bank by not doing it, right?
Sure. Yeah, I'm just kind of, what, 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 keep getting in our head, what the pros and cons of that. And because, you know, a large part of Laramie, there's alleys. And you go, okay, what's the, what's the beauty or the, the, the disadvantage of that?
And I think for existing places that already have alleyways, I think what it lends itself to opportunity. Uh, for things like ADUs potentially.
Cause you have another entrance for the area.
Entrance, you can maybe be a little more secluded if you want, don't want that like. Feel of somebody living in your backyard. Um, in multi-family zoning districts, it could allow for, you know, parking, like a, you know, another driveway or. You know, parking spaces, things like that. And so, I mean, there's.
Since you all seem to hate alleyways, then just put in a plug for alleyways. Alleyways make for a very livable community. It's a place where you can walk your dogs, meet your neighbors.
Yeah, they're the most interesting part of, of a residential area.
So i- it is, and I realize, and I realize the tension that exists in terms of using the property, but. One reason why I bought the house that I'm in now is because I have an alley and I thought. And my area is riven with alleys, but it's an older neighborhood, at least goes back to the fifties. And I just think it's very pleasant to be able to get out and stroll around the neighborhood and offer your blood to mosquitoes.
Well, that's where the mosquito trucks drive.
All right. Is, is there a motion to adjourn? Second, second with Tom. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Again, Dirk, thank you. That was, you did a hell of a lot of work on it.